All right. Good morning, everybody. It is January 30th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Hadley Housing Authority in Hadley, Massachusetts. Welcome, everybody. The agenda, number one, is topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anybody have anything that fits this category?
Mr. Chairman?
Sue.
I submitted a lot of things to the chairman to be put onto the agenda, and none of them appeared, so I would like to have another meeting. I would like to schedule another meeting this coming month in February to make up for the fact that the things that were, that I suggested for the agenda are very important to discuss and not to have to wait a whole other month to talk about them.
Were you addressing the chair, Ms. Oppenheimer?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like I owe you an apology, Susan. I do try to include all the agenda items that I, that I get, so if I'm missing stuff, we should work on that. Let's have another meeting, all right?
I would like that.
All right, let's do that right now. Let's schedule a meeting for next week if people are around. I'm not looking at my calendar. I guess I better. I am going away down to Washington in the middle of the month for a week, so I have to be careful about that.
So the Housing Authority, we have a conference next week?
Yeah, UMass?
No, we're down in Connecticut for NERC-NAR, for federal, it's a federal conference.
Oh, I didn't know.
Right, yeah.
I don't get those notices.
Because we, we don't have federal here, that's why.
Oh, is that something out of interest to commis, local commissioners?
No, no. I actually did just read too recently that if there's something that we can justify sending you out of state for a training week, we would.
Okay. When is the training, Pam?
So the training is next, it starts Sunday and through Wednesday.
You won't be around then?
I won't, well, not. And then I'm actually on my first vacation since March of 2020, on the 17th through the 24th.
So it looks like we're not going to be able to have a meeting. Uh, that's...
So it'd be, maybe the, isn't the 12th? So maybe the 12th, that would be in between. So it wouldn't be next week, but it would be the following week.
So this, uh, next week, 7/8th and 9th are not good for you?
No. No.
Okay, the 12th, Monday, the 12th?
It's my birthday.
Or you mean Tuesday, Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 13th.
Oh, I'm looking at the, no, February?
Tuesday, the 13th.
Tuesday, the 13th.
You got anything?
Oh.
No.
Yeah, next week's no good for me, but the following week's probably better, yeah.
Is Tuesday, the 13th, okay for you?
Yes, yep.
Tuesday, the 13th?
Uh-huh.
11:00 AM?
Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody.
Can, can we go ahead and schedule the, the end of month one as well? Just, let's get it done?
Sure.
Okay.
And we usually do what, the last Tuesday of the month?
Yes.
Which would be the 27th, is that correct?
That sounds right.
Yep.
All right, so we have two meetings scheduled now, February the 13th and February the 27th, both at 11:00 AM.
Good.
All right. Pamela, you're around this week?
I am.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. Any other topics, um, not previously anticipated, no? Approval of minutes. Has anybody, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? We have two sets, right? November 28th and December 19th?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of Tuesday, November 28th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll do a second.
Discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of November 28th?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Sue?
I haven't read them yet, so I have just abstained.
Abstained, all right. Three in favor, one abstention?
Didn't get a chance to get them.
Uh, they're in our package today, so...
They were available on Friday, and we received them on Thursday. No, no, just so we're by those, because we received them on Thursday via digital file.
So looking forward, if you read them and you have issues, you're free to bring them up. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the minutes of Tuesday, November 19th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richie. Uh, any other discussion on December 19th minutes? If not, I'll call for a vote, all to approve the minutes of Tuesday, December 19th, 2023.
All?
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain?
We just got the minutes a few minutes ago.
Okay. So, okay, I'm not gonna ask. All right. Thank you very much. I also need to read them more carefully. Uh, Executive Director's Report, Mrs. Rogers.
So we have the warrant report?
Yeah.
Um, and a letter of treasure. You want to present the warrant report?
Okay, so the, well, thank you. So we, um, I vote that we approve, I mean, I move that we approve the warrant report for transactions, just a second, 12/20, or 12/14/2023 to 12/14/2023, in the amount of Now, yeah?
Do I have a second?
I'll do a second, Eric.
Uh, discussion on that, any, anything unusual, Madam Treasurer?
There was nothing unusual. Uh, Mr. Whitkis, did you see anything unusual?
No, I just questioned about the, uh, at the one time, uh, the shredding of the paper. Was that on that one? That previous one?
Oh, that was, uh, that was just the one we did last week, so it'll be on next month, yes.
Okay.
So no discussion?
No discussion, all in favor of approving the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. Abstaining? Susan, aye? No vote? Aye, all right, all in favor, we, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the warrant report for transactions 12/28/2023 in the amount of, it's in the gray, it's hard to read, $8,950.30.
I'll do a second.
Any discussion, anything unusual?
There was nothing unusual on that warrant report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Did you find anything unusual, Mr. Whitkis?
No, like I said about this shredding, but that's...
That's next month, yeah.
No, it's not here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a vote to approve the Treasurer's Report. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain. Three in favor, one abstention? Thank you.
That was the, that was the Treasurer's, that was the warrant report.
Well, no, we're on the Treasurer's Report now.
Yeah, but he said the Treasurer's Report.
Oh, okay.
Are we good?
So we have a unanimous approval?
We're on the Treasurer's Report now, yeah.
Okay, now we're on the Treasurer's Report, so...
Okay. Are you presenting a Treasurer's Report, or are you asking us to vote on it?
Okay, I will.
Yeah, you don't have to vote on it, so this is just informational, uh, information from Gary DePace, um, and then our monthly income and expenses will be on the quarterly report, too, they're identical.
Anything unusual, Pamela?
No. No, you will just see there's a modernization, there's funds paid that were not reimbursed, but, um, that will, that will be, uh, re, uh, submitted to HLC for reimbursement, has been, we're just waiting on reimbursement.
All right. And the quarterly operating statements, that's, you don't have to vote on that?
No, those we do have to report on. So you'll see the, um, the full operating statement for the 400-1 program, which is both of our programs. And we just started our fiscal year on October 1st, so we're in good shape, we have an overspend. And then also included in the quarterly is the modernization report that you'll be voting on, too, and it shows all the open, um, projects that are queuing up to be undertaken.
We just get the project number, is that them on the back?
Yes, it will show you the project numbers, um, the large amount, the 267, 112 is for a, um, that's the window project that we're still, it has not been closed out yet.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Thank God, I just don't see where they, where we see what the actual project numbers refer to. Am I missing something?
I can get that going forward for you, so it, yeah, it's a matchup game, you match up the number with, with the project.
Yeah.
But that top one, the 117082, that is the, the window project that will be closing out today.
Okay, yeah, it'd be great to have what the project actually is next to the number.
Sure.
That was never done? That would be something new?
That would be new, yeah.
All right. Can we move on, or we, did you want to vote on this?
So you do need to vote on both the quarterly, um, statement and the modernization report, please.
All right.
And the modernization report, we're gonna have to sign.
No, I, I signed, yeah.
We don't need to, okay.
It's an old form.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve, please.
I move that we vote to approve the quarterly operating statement, uh, as of, for the period ending 12/31/2023, and the modernization report.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, three in favor, one abstention? Thank you. Property manager report.
So we have the vacancy report going, um, so right now we, we have a total of seven vacant units, and, um, property management and maintenance has been working to get these units turned over, we had a good, um, slew of apartments, good number of apartments turned over, and now we're kind of at a standstill. So now we're in a situation where we have applicants ready to go and committed to certain units, but we don't, they're not maintenance ready, and they're not maintenance ready because of the maintenance department, they're not maintenance ready because we're waiting for the executive office to push the approval button on that funding that they said they were gonna give us.
So to clarify, because it was a little confusing, it's not because of the maintenance department, it's because of waiting for the state to approve the funding.
But, correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So we do have five units, um, and both of the units over at, um, Burke Way are major capital projects, so those are gonna take longer, and then here at, at Golden Court, we do have, um, two major unit turnovers, and that was because we're, we're putting in some ADA, um, a rolling shower and cabinetry and things of that, but we have tenants for those that have agreed to move there, too. So we're working on it, I'm hoping by next month, hoping by next month that we have the approval, I can report that we've received the approval.
And the funding?
And the, well, once the funding's there, we'll start spending.
Okay.
But knowing that we'll be reimbursed.
Okay, great.
So somebody moves out, and we're ready to renovate for a new tenant, and we can't finish that because we wait for funding from the state, am I following you?
So typically we do, we'll take it from our reserves, and we have a budget line item for maintenance, for turnovers and maintenance and supplies.
Right.
Um, but with this vacancy initiative, if you remember from a couple meetings ago, the Department of Housing, or excuse me, the Executive Office of Housing came out and did an inspection of all of them, and have promised a good amount of money to bring them up to speed, so it's not just the normal wax, buff, paint, it's the replacement of kitchen cabinets and upgrade in the bathrooms to bring the units up to, up to, almost like, it's a renovation as opposed to a turnover.
Remember, we talked about that.
And to, I, I don't want to say no to the money and just, you know, buff it up again, if they're offering the money, we should take it and improve the property.
And you think that money will be?
Oh, yeah.
Available within the next few months?
Yeah, it's just that the executive office is overwhelmed with work, too, there's only so many people, so many hours, and they're, they're reading through the, a tremendous amount of paperwork and projects. So, but once I get confirmation, we'll, we'll, we'll start moving, so. Um, and then our TARP report, um, TARP is not good in Hadley, um, typically hasn't been this time of year, it's not good as, as well, but, so currently we have arrears of 22, 243, and of that, and we have repayment agreements of 13, 489, 41. Uh, one of the, the tenants in the 667 at the top, um, was slated for some, for eviction, but we stopped the eviction because of the weather and the circumstances, and we're finally able to get services in place, we're working to get a repayment agreement and funding, um, and hopefully that'll all come through.
Always good to hear when we can avoid an eviction.
Absolutely.
I'm looking for those two numbers you just said.
So at the very far column, it says December TARP?
Yep.
You see the subtotal of 22, 243?
I do.
That's, that's rent that's outstanding, that is not in a repayment agreement?
Yep.
And then the bottom, um, the subtotal of 13, 489, 41?
Yes, I see it.
Is rent outstanding that is in a repayment agreement. So as far as the executive office is concerned, that's, that's okay, that's a good thing, you can work with people and put them in repayment agreements. The top part is, is we get, um, we can get an audit finding for that.
So the, uh, the 22, 243, we, we have no agreements for that money?
Correct.
And what happens typically?
So typically you're, you try to work with the person to get a repayment agreement, because again, it, it's good for the tenant, it's good for the Housing Authority. Um, we do reach out to TPP, the Tenant Protective, um, Services, they try to work with folks as well.
Does that system work?
It does, if, if everybody, if they cooperate, but sometimes tenants don't want to cooperate with that.
They're not, they're, they're not mandated to meet with the TPP people?
Though mandate, they can be mandated if, when we get to the court part, so if we, if we take them into court for, um, non-payment of rent or habitual late payer, we, the first tier of eviction, uh, case is always mediation, and at that point you can mediate, um, and say, you know, we'd like to get into repayment, we'd like you to work with TPP.
And the court would say, do it?
Um, well, if the tenant will agree to that, that's fine, if the tenant's not in agreement, then it would go before the judge, and the judge could order it as well.
Enforce it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, it's a work in progress.
It does look like a lot, you're right.
Yeah, it is, it's a lot.
It's a lot. You had said before, Pamela, that Hadley is, has a long history of this non-payment of rent, refusal to pay rent. It, it's not everyone, though, that we've got a lot of people that pay their rent quite reliably.
Yes, yeah, it's, but I think the culture of the, of the Housing Authority, for whatever reason, has always been, there's been a lot of non-payment of rent and arguing over of what the rent should be and things of that nature, um, and that there's no importance put on the TARP. But now through the audit process, we did just have our PMR on Thursday, uh, which I'll have the results for you at the next meeting, um, not the, not the 13th, but the 27th meeting, there was an audit finding for, for the TARP, because we're, we don't get people in repayment, whereas in other housing authorities, um, like Beltratown, like with their TARP, there's a long history of repayment agreements. Tenants know that when they're starting to get into trouble, they have, um, a flat tire or work that needs to be done on their car, or something came up, they'll come right to the office and say, I'm having problems, can I put this month's rent into a repayment agreement? And they do it, and we have many tenants there that it's almost, as soon as they get one paid off, they go and they put another one in. But the rent's getting paid, there, there's no interest, there's no, um, late fees, and it just, it helps them, because our folks are on a limited budget, so it helps them stay within their budget.
Any thoughts on how to change the old culture here, if that's what it is, and get people to get with the program?
So I think it starts from the, the top down, so it's, the commissioners need to support it, um, the commissioners need to understand the importance of collecting rent and why, I mean, that's why we're here.
Right.
Um, and the detriment that TARP play, unpaid TARP pays, uh, plays with the Housing Authority, um, and then just get a culture that it's, you know, it's, you have to pay your rent on time, you have to follow the, the regs, the rent collection policy.
Okay.
And that it's a win-win.
That's just what I was gonna say, it doesn't seem like anybody wins when they delay their
Exactly.
Responsibilities. So I'd like to talk about that again, maybe come up with a letter or, or something that could go out, encouraging people. Do you need to vote on anything?
No, no, that's just informational.
Okay. Facilities, capital, we finally got the certificate for the window project, I see?
Yes.
That's great. The work order report, right.
Um, so you do have to vote, um, you do have to vote on the certificate of final completion, so the, uh, this is the, the architect, the, um, the contractor, the Housing Authority, and the executive office had, has reviewed all the documents to make sure everything is in place, there was a walkthrough several months ago with a checklist, uh, punch list, the punch list has been completed, this was the last of it, the, the blinds in the community room, sorry to...
This looks good.
Not a sunny day, but, um...
Very nice.
Yeah. So that would, uh, we would need a vote to, um, say that the board agrees with these, this information and accepts the, uh, certificate of substantial completion.
I move that we vote to, uh, is it approve or accept?
Uh, approve.
Approve the certificate of substantial completion, uh, dated the 29th of December of 2023 for the window project.
And if I could just respectfully add, project number 117082.
Project number 117082.
I'll do a second on that.
Where do you see the date?
It's written out in the longhand. Uh, let's see, where, I just had it.
Oh, it's in the box.
Right here.
Yeah. It's in the box.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, just quick discussion, this is the way it's done, we don't, we never hear from the contractor, or the guy who did the final inspection, they don't come in to say?
No.
Yes, this is legitimate, this, uh, this is...
Yeah, this is their, yeah, this is their...
This is what we get.
Yeah, this is certification from them.
Okay.
And you're, you're accepting that from them. So there's a lot, like, legal paperwork.
Yeah, but there's no signatures on anything?
I, because it came through DocuSign, so there's cert, certified DocuSign.
Okay, I would assume that.
See, these are certified DocuSign, right here.
I'll take your word for it?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Very nice to have a project get all the way done, congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Susan?
I thought we were having another inspection as far as, we had an initial inspection after they were done, and windows, where they came into apartments, and there was a lot of paint missing around the window area, that hasn't been rectified in a lot of apartments, where the, where the paint is still hanging, or a different paint in one level and another, so I don't see how we can pass a project until everybody's apartment looks decent after that project was done.
So I would have to check with John Williams, but it was my understanding that it was completed, that they did finish the paint, and if there's not, then the maintenance staff will go in and do that.
But should that hold up this?
I, I wouldn't hold that up, no.
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 That's something maintenance can, it's spot areas, right, Sue?
Well, not, you know, you have to spot in your apartment and look, I can't stick for other people.
So we do have, um, tenants here, and we do have two tenants on the board, too. If you hear, uh, please tell anybody to make sure they call in to let us know, and we can go in and take care of that.
So you're saying the maintenance will take care of it and not, you're not gonna rely on the company that put the windows in?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But if, everybody should contact the, the office and let us know.
Let, do a work order?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, please.
Okay.
I move that, will you approve?
All in favor?
Yep.
That's unanimous? Thank you. Sue, you let us know if you're having trouble getting that paintwork done?
Work order report, ma'am?
Yep, and that's just self-explanatory, um, we are cha, gonna be changing, um, the way we're doing vacancy work orders, we're gonna actually be breaking them up further, because you'll see a, a work order for vacancy, and it can be open for a month at a time, and then it looks like one work order was done when there's a lot of work that goes into it, so we're gonna be separating vacancy into, uh, subcategories of vacancy to include electrical, if there's an electrical work that needs to be done, or plumbing, flooring of that nature, so you'll see a change coming up, but, um, there has been a good amount of work on vacancies this month, um, we have had some no heat calls, hot water issue calls, and, um...
Clogged tubs and sink calls.
Yes, yeah. Yep, so...
Yeah.
But they, maintenance has been busy.
Yep.
So that, and that is just for informational, and if anyone has any questions.
So the boiler cleanings that I see on, on the work orders here, those are done?
Yes, yep, and that would, that's an outside company that we...
Right, I see, so, um, but we're still having hot water issues, is that what you're...
It's still, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, there's, the hot waters are not part, part of the boilers, there is independent, um, hot water heaters, they are two separate components.
So what's the fix to get everybody hot water?
Well, it's a mechanical, I mean, it's gonna break, it's...
It's gonna break.
It's gonna break, unfortunately, that's just the nature of, of machines, they will break.
Yeah.
And then you repair them.
So for the answer, one thing was...
Pretty much, yeah.
Uh, repeated hot water problems in the building I'm in, not, you know, the, the, we would get lukewarm water from time to time, so what it was, eventually they were able to figure out it was a sensor, then they had to order the sensor, replace the sensor, and now there's no trouble, see, it's these old components that break.
Or, or electrical, there's a lot of electrical.
Yes, there's electrical.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but just...
But we're on top of it, that's all I care about?
Yes, we are on top of it.
So we don't need a vote for that?
No, no, that's just confirmation.
But you anticipate by next commissioner's meeting, everybody will have had hot water and...
Oh, they do now, oh, it's, it's repaid.
Okay.
Yeah.
All these are repaired.
That's what I wanted to hear.
But, but remember, it keeps happening, because these are old systems.
Yeah. Thank you. Maybe I could bring this, a topic up now, just kind of for fun, but I saw in the newspaper, Hatfield Housing decided not to accept state money to replace what I think were mini splits, I didn't read it carefully.
Should we, should we go in board correspondence for that?
Or just commissioner's discussion?
Commissioner, well, there...
But that's fine.
I thought we were just going into commissioner's, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I guess my question is, how often does that kind of grant money become available, and are we chasing grant money like that, or do we have no needs right now?
So if I, um, I didn't see the article, but what I think you're, is Hatfield said no to mini splits, is that correct?
Yeah, like $400,000, they said they turned away from the state grant.
And Beltratown did the same thing, Beltratown, um, and we're kind of going that same way here, too, where, where we're saying on our, um, at Burke Way, we have a couple boilers that need to be there, and they want to put in mini splits, um, and we have to really weigh that, because it's, um, mini splits can come with issues, there are increased costs, we did mini splits in a fourplex for family housing in Beltratown, and the residents' electric bills went up $100 a month.
Okay.
It was terrible, and then the Housing Authority ended up absorbing and taking over those electric bills, because they, they couldn't afford them, it was just crazy, not to mention the upkeep of the mini splits, they're like twice yearly, that you have to have cleanings to prevent mold and condensation, um, the mini splits, again, in Beltratown, they're, they're about, just five years old, and we had one that failed, so there's, you know, $6,000 to replace one, and it, it's for one room, there's, each of those apartments have four mini splits.
I hear so much good stuff about mini splits, I don't have them, but, uh, yeah.
And the Grammy Housing Authority has them and had a huge mold problem.
Really?
And they're, and they're a complete... And they're, and they're a complete similar to this. So on one hand, they're environmentally safe supposedly because it's electric as opposed to fossil fuel and that's the direction the Commonwealth is going.
Right.
But for a housing authority, it's, it can lead to problems, so.
Is there any grant, grant money that you would like to see come in here, whether it's maybe replacing boilers or, I don't know, it's getting old here.
So we did have capital fund, in our five-year capital plan, we had funding for boilers and water, water heaters replacement. But what the executive office has done, because again it came down from the governor's office, was they're not funding it anymore. So that capital project then turns into money earmarked for mini splits.
Because they moved from fossil fu, what they imagine being fossil fuel driven to.
Right. So in, you know, then, as in in Belcher Town, we're using budget reserves to re, we only have two boilers left to replace. So it's, we're gonna put in, use our reserves and buy an oil boiler.
So what you're saying is the mini splits, the, the state would like for everybody to go to mini splits. However, there's problems with maintenance, upkeep, mold, so health hazard problems plus the utility bills for it.
The utility bills.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
So I applaud Hatfield.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners discussion? Oh yeah, election of officers. We have no vice chair right now. And if I can't make one of the next couple of meetings or whatever, I'd like to know who would run the meeting, like, and someone to volunteer to be vice chair. Reese is in the treasurer's position, so she didn't feel comfortable, right?
No, no, you can be the treasurer and the vice chair. You just can't be a treasurer and a chair. But you can be a vice chair as a treasurer.
And run a couple of meetings if your chair gets run over by a bus or something, okay. So I'd like to nominate Reese to be vice chair, Richie, unless you'd like it.
No, I think the treasurer. I think Reese is treasurer and she can be the chair, vice chair.
That's fine with me. It's okay with, I'll make a motion that Richie take over as treasurer and Reese be vice chair.
Sounds good.
That's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion? You comfortable, Susan? Everybody comfortable? Yeah? Okay. This is not gonna last long because hopefully we're gonna have new commissioners and all that. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. All right, thank you guys. Board correspondents? I don't know of any.
It was the audit report, the Amherst Housing Authority audit report. So we, Sue, did you get that in the, or do you need a hard copy of that as well or?
Is that part of this packet?
It was part of the packet, yeah. It was sent over on a digital file, but it's, what is it, 80 pages?
Close to 100.
Why would we, as I have the housing authority, be going over the Amherst Housing Authority audit report?
We have to do your due diligence to ensure that we're, we're doing things correctly too, because we're your managing agent. So it's just for informational purposes for you.
And ours comes, what's our annual, our fiscal year again?
Is, October, September. And then, so we just did the PMR, the Performance Management Review, just this past week, that was completed. And then, we did, we just do it in the fall with Lisa Fallon did the AUP.
Performance Management Review, I'm not remembering what that is.
So that one is they come in and they, they do look at tenant files, they look at tenant files as well. Excuse me, they don't. They're looking at our certifications, they're looking at board member training, they're looking at how we're running the work order system and facilities. There's a, there's a lot of, on the facility side, they come in with both a, the person that is gonna, they do inspections, they look at the common areas, the mech rooms, and then there's the despotted certifications and budgets, TARP, things of that nature.
So the Performance Management Review is being done now, it'll be ready.
It's completed, yeah. We're just waiting for the paperwork.
For the paperwork. So what we were given on Thursday in our board packet email was the AUP, Agreed Upon Procedure Audit, which does include financials, and it's the audit done for stated public housing, which is what we are here. It also included an independent audit for federal public housing because Amherst also does federal public housing. So I read the whole thing and Amherst Housing did very well on both their AUP for stated public housing and on their independent audit for federal public housing.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
There were, wasn't anything?
There was nothing glaring, nothing glaring.
Nothing. There was, it was.
No findings? No?
There, there were a couple of things that had to do with research, I believe.
Yes.
So one of them was, there's a, a new method for discerning whether tenants are reporting all their income using Cash Apps. So now there is a method for housing authorities to investigate that and to find out whether or not the tenant is getting money from Cash App and not reporting it. So that was one thing. This is a very new situation with the use of Cash Apps. So now tenants are not gonna get away with getting income from a Cash App kind of thing like PayPal or whatever.
Reese, I'd like to ask a question. What constitutes, when you say a part of it was done as an independent audit?
Markham and Associates, see, excuse us, please. We're trying to conduct a business meeting here. Thank you. So the independent audit is what it's called that if you have federal public housing, you have to have quote, "an independent audit conducted by an approved auditor." So they had an independent audit done by Markham and Associates, who is a state-approved auditor for housing authorities that have federal programs. So the independent audit done for federal public housing programs, including Section 8, et cetera, is, is different than the agreed-upon procedure audit for stated public housing. Is that correct?
Which is also an independent auditor.
Which is also an independent auditor.
Approved by the state.
Approved by the state, yeah.
So who okayed, like the salary of Lisa, like Lisa Fallon was, in, in here, I was looking that it's $4,500, not salary, but as far as the amount that she was paid for.
That comes through the budget guidelines and it, it's based on per-unit cost. So they, they just, there's a fee set for the auditors and depending on how many units you have, you pay that. So that is a, that's an approved fee from the executive office.
So that was okayed?
Yes.
Previously.
It's kind of a set fee.
It is a set fee, yeah.
You know, it's what the state says you have to pay.
Yeah.
When we.
And they give us, excuse me, I'm sorry, they, they give us the funding for that too.
Yeah.
When we have our audit review for Hadley's, financials and operating procedures, is it possible to ask the people that did the work to come in and run through with us? I mean, that's what the PVTA does and it's helpful. Everybody likes to hear the auditor.
It's possible if we ask them.
I don't know if they need to get paid or not to come up for half an hour.
I don't, I don't think anybody works for free. And then to travel to, to Hadley as well, so.
All right, well, I, for one.
But we could ask.
All right, let's, let's see if they would do it for free or what they would charge, please. If nobody else is interested, I just think it'd be informative to see, hear from them, the horse's mouth, what they did, any concerns they have.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On that note, there is an entire course about financials for stated and federal public housing in the state of Massachusetts. All the rules, the regs, the how to read a financial statement, a quarterly audit, everything is included in a certification course offered by Mass Nero and it is a state-approved course. So you go one time and learn everything, which is what I did about the financial operations of a board of commissioners for a local housing authority.
Thank you.
That's how I know this. So instead of have, dragging in an audit group to teach us how to understand this, we could take it upon ourselves to go to the training and in three hours you can learn how to read financial statements and warrant reports, et cetera.
So what happens if the PVTA is, the auditor comes in and, you know, it's a huge report, a huge process, but he just goes through any concerns he had. There's actually a point in where staff and administration is asked to leave the room and the commissioners or advisory board members are allowed to ask questions and they're allowed to bring up any concerns that they may not have been comfortable bringing up with the administration and staffs there. I don't know if we need to do all that here, but it was interesting. It's always interesting for me to hear the guys who do the work go through and mention things that you might not have thought of or the training may not have brought up.
They, they do give us a report.
Yeah, well, okay.
We just have to read it.
Other people may not be interested.
I can ask, I mean, that's an interesting process. Who oversees on a different, what's the overseeing agency for the PVTA? The Transit Authority, right?
Yeah, there's a board of advisors.
No, but then from, on a state level, because there's, there's other.
Yeah, Department of Transportation, DOT.
Okay, yeah. No, I'll, I'll ask the auditor. I mean, that is, that's an interesting.
I think it'd be informative, but if it's a problem, I'm not gonna make a big deal about it. Now, this isn't on the agenda, so shut me up if it's not appropriate. We're having trouble keeping in property managers, is that true? Or is, have we lost a property manager?
We have, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we?
But that's day to day and it's not.
And we have a new property manager.
What's that?
We do have a new property manager.
We do, okay, that's good to hear.
The training right now.
Thank you. What else we got here? Anybody else have anything before we go on to public comments? Nothing from the commissioners. Folks, if you'd like to ask questions or make comments, now's the time. I'm just gonna ask you to keep, keep things concise if you can.
What is it, public comment?
Public comment, public comment. Helene.
I live up the street, it's not necessary. I live in affordable housing and in order to bring our community together, we have some wonderful parties going on for holidays, some incentives parties, some fun things to do, and it brings our, it brings our community together. And I noticed, I do not live in Golden Cor, but I do have friends here and I am an advocate. I was wondering why this community does not have any type of social gatherings for a holiday such as Christmas, Hanukkah. I think that it would be a wonderful way for the community to come together. It doesn't have to be expensive. It could even have community members bring individual treats, homemade or store-voiled, but there's absolutely nothing offered here. I do know of public housing where I used to live in Florida where they did have community things. So that's one comment. The other comment, I'd like some kind of, is a, is a response okay for that?
We'll see.
Okay. And then, well, it would be a wonderful way to bring a community together.
Oh, you mean a comment on your previous point?
I mean, is there a comment, is there a reason that this community cannot have any type of.
We will bring that up, we will bring that up for discussion in future.
And the other comment I'd like to make is, I feel that the divided community, because the board is quite divided, the community seems, that to me is a statement that sort of like if a community is together, as in my community, not every single person, there are homebound people, there are other people that have social anxiety or antisocial, but if a majority of, if a few people in a community would get together, then there would be much more of a democracy going on. So this community does seems not to, it seems to me that the administration or something in this community is that they don't come together. And I don't think that it's to the benefit of the people.
Okay, that's the same point you, that's your first and your second.
Well, both are important for a community to come together. There should be more social gatherings and I don't think that it's to the benefit. There seems to be a lack of community in Golden Cor.
Thank you, Helene. Okay. Gosh, Maureen.
I have one important, very important thing to say about that. We have to have a tenants' association to do that.
Okay. I hope your fellow residents hear you.
I was all done home when I came here, what, how many years ago? I can't remember. I feel too old to do it now.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Yes. Well, when Kendra was here, she left less than a year ago, she would have all these activities for us. I would go around and try to get people. She was happy when four people would be here.
Yes.
Month after month after month, Maureen would come, Donnie would come, I would come and that was it. Nobody else came. So as much as the administration, if Kendra was part of it, they did everything they could. They spent the money to get it. And it was actually, we had a fun time when we were together doing it, even if it was only five of us, you know? So when people just go ahead and say things without getting all the sides and figuring out, it's, that gets to be disturbing as well. So all I'm saying is, is that we used to, nobody showed up. Out of 40 something people here, four or five showed up.
So I don't wanna engage too much, but is there a solution to that? Is there a way to get people to get engaged?
You really have to have a tenants' association of some kind.
That would help probably, yeah. Please be thinking about this, guys. You know, the folks here are folks who care and you show up and you're willing to engage with us. So, you know, we bear, you know, we're all volunteers here, nobody's making any money, so.
It's been a most boring and downer winter or fall here.
I'm not hearing that. Something's a downer.
More, more antisocial or downer than it has been since.
What, what is, the atmosphere or?
Right, yeah, the atmosphere. You look out the window and you don't see anything.
Pamela has her.
And nobody comes in here that I know of, other than these.
Well, it gives us something to work on. I hope the commissioners can help in some way. Pamela?
Well, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying, these things are very important and they've existed for a long time.
One second.
So a true tenants' association unfortunately wouldn't do social events either. You can do them on the side, but that's not the purpose of a.
I'm barely hearing.
I'm sorry. A true tenants' association doesn't do events. That's not the main purpose. You can do it as a side, but what, but that's not the main purpose of the tenants' association. But what you could do is, I mean, there's a group of residents here now that it's, you know, you can start activities yourself. We are, Tracy mentioned the resident service coordinator, even that, that, that role is not to put on parties. We use that person to put on, on events. Don't, you could maybe edit, edit that out of the tape. But it's, that's not that role either. But the tenants can play a role of it. The, the senior community that my mother lives in is very active. Since she's moved there, she's in the community room with a group of tenants ranging anywhere from six people to, their Friday night card games are now 14 people.
My daughter's told me all that just recently because she wants me to go move to the place.
Well, it's, but you could start it here, just as a group of neighbors, starting, starting card games or.
Just saying that you gotta get, it's just the people that come here that apparently know this.
Well, we can help, we can try to help organize some games, some, or some events where people are, are playing games. Kendra did a movie, I think there was only four people.
Oh my God, we had to go.
Those things that she used to get were very good.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's start. Can I speak as a tenant? I'll move up there.
Tracy had her hand up first, so hang on a second, excuse me.
I have a, you know, there's no, a lot of people don't come together and what about, we have Golden One, Village Two, Village Three, Golden Four, Five, Six. Why don't we get a representative from each building? And then we can all get together and that's only like six or eight of us and we can figure out how we can bring everybody together. Because no matter what, everybody's got something in common.
I like it.
Can I just comment on that? So that's actually a great idea and that's what the LTO in Belcher Town does. They have a, for each of the developments, they have a leader of the development and then each of the buildings at Everett Acres. and then each of the buildings at Everett Acres, they have a, they have a leader as well. Or, or the person that helps communicate. So that's a great idea, and that might lead towards going to getting a tenants' association, but also having activities, too.
Right, but also we learn from, because, you know, a lot of us just congregate with the members in our, our building. So if we can at least, it's a start, you know, it's something. Not everybody's going to come, hoping more than four or five.
Let's try, we don't know unless you guys try, so let's, let's give it a try. Susan, did you have something?
Tracy, I wanted to address you, there was one service coordinator here that gave a few activities for a certain number of months, but when you look over the years, we haven't had activities planned. So I don't want you to, you know, make it seem like we've had perpetual activities here. It was a short, very short period of time.
It was the coordinator that did it, and nobody showed up. That was my point.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to engage like that.
We don't have to go back, I'm just saying recently, and it failed miserably. So there's got to be another, there's got to be another solution to the problem.
Yeah, well, I like the idea of a representative from each block, and I don't know, I'm just going to go-
You know, all come together and, and figure things out, because you're not going to figure things out unless you get together and talk about it.
Yeah.
You have to have an open mind, and you have to, like, think forward.
So this is not something the board can get involved in. This is something tenants need to come together and decide to do on their own. Okay, there's no state funding to have parties, celebrations, Christmas. Every time we've had that here, it's out of the goodness of the executive director's heart in finding the money to put together to do it. This is something tenants, this is something, exactly. But this is on the tenants who want to be social to create that.
I don't want to shut anybody up, though, you know.
Social.
Yeah.
We did get money from the state board, our tenants'.
And I think it's important to know-
Well, that's where tenants' association is really not what we're talking about.
All right, excuse me, I want to discourage people from-
We're talking about associating the tenants.
Yeah, okay, guys. I think it's important that people can speak without-
Yeah.
-being criticized, and it's important to know that the commissioners support some, certain ideas like more social activities. Judy, did you have a-
I have, I have a number of things that I just wanted to bring up. One is the condition of the road coming in and going into the back. There are really large potholes. It's really, it's, why can't we get the road fixed?
Thank you, oh, we will look into that.
I have an old car, I wanted to last.
Drive slowly. No, I'm kidding. What else you got, Judy?
I got, the office hours, as posted, are absolutely not being followed. On Friday and Monday, very seldom is there anybody here. The office is not available to tenants at all.
They're, they're here.
Okay.
It's posted, but it's not happening.
It is, it is, I'm here.
The date, the dates for the board meetings is not being, it's not being publicized to the tenants. The electric thingy out here, if you look at it, it's back to December, October, November, December. It's not up to date. So that, if that were how people are looking to see, and, and again, tenants don't come down here. They don't come down here. They have homemakers that come down here. So they're not able to see what's on there. Also, the board, the board meetings are not being put into the newsletter, the monthly newsletter, which every tenant gets, so they don't know.
It is.
These things should be, what else?
Sounds like solvable problems. Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, I, the answering service is still, has employees that have not been employed here for over a year, almost two years. When you call, you're still getting click for Joe Schmo, and that person doesn't even exist anymore. It's very difficult for tenants here that, you know, hardly know how to use the phone at all. And I would like to address the hot water issue, not the hot water so much, the amount of water that has to be run before it gets hot. It's the biggest waste of water. I have to turn my water on in the morning and let it run for almost 10 minutes before it gets warm. If this is, it's always been this way, we've addressed, it's always been this way. We are wasting water by the gallons.
Thank you, Judy.
That's my two cents.
We'll hopefully address all these things.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address-
Pamela, please.
The answering service, the answering, the auto treat, that's actually was just worked on last night, finally, by the IT company that we have contracted with. They have the first part of the, I was testing it this morning, and the first part of that answering service has been cleaned up. But then when I found, when I went into the, the submenus, like if you hit, for Hadley, hit one, the names were still there. So that will be corrected. We are actively working with, with the IT person. It is unfortunately a very complex system that they're even having trouble.
It's very complicated, even for me, never mind other tenants old, not older than me, but tenants that don't know how to use his phone as well. And they can't come down here and get any help, because there's nobody there. We've had four property managers in a year, and here is a serious problem. I'm glad you brought it up, because we never have a property manager, and nobody can get, get any information from the office. I know, because I had paperwork to pass in, and I walked down here five times before someone was here to accept my paperwork. I dated it, went down on this date, this date, this date, this date, I wrote it on the paper. There's, there's nobody here. And we're paying to have someone in the office.
Tracy, thank you.
Mary's been here, she was here yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And Mary, 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 and-
Carrie.
And then last week, too. I don't know, maybe I didn't get the right day to do that.
No, there's none. And I have one more thing that I just, I have to say, in terms of getting tenants together. Okay, this is my feeling, I, I think it's others, but I'm only going to say it for myself. This is a very dangerous community. It is dangerous. Who wants to come down here with people that called the police on you, that take you to court, that are so nasty? Who wants to socialize with them? Not me.
Thank you, Judy. Anybody else?
I move that we-
About that, could I just say-
I hope we'll be talking about all these things, setting up.
It should just be like that.
What's that?
No, it didn't.
Well, it used to be.
No, no, it's not as dangerous as it is now. Tenant against tenant? Who's going to come down here and socialize with them?
Well, I really think, I really think an LTO could be really helpful to identifying, you know, and analyzing these problems and coming up with solutions. I wish that would happen. Thank you for speaking up.
That would be the reason why people aren't coming down here, not just-
We hear you, Judy, thank you.
We've already got our next meeting date, we need items for future agenda. Now would be a good time for board members to specify what items will be, that we want on the next meeting that has now been scheduled for-
The 13th.
Tuesday, the 13th of February. So what items were they that you wanted to be scheduled?
The status is on the search, on who's putting ads in the newspaper, or isn't?
The creation of a hiring subcommittee.
Okay, a hiring subcommittee.
What newspapers, internet sites were the, was the ad placed? And the total monies for ads.
Did we ever approve a budget for the ads?
We didn't. You, you, you had left it up to, that I could, I could spend the money, and I believe we're, we're still under $1,000, but it has been posted as it is required.
Yeah, we can't talk about it, so.
Okay.
And finding, maybe finding a temporary board member until the election in May.
We can't do a temporary?
No, you, no, I think if you can find somebody, then the town has to appoint them.
That's what I meant, I mean, I-
Yeah, wouldn't be a temporary board member, so.
Okay.
And I personally would like to know an update on the Gary DePace-
I, I'm going to caution you.
When you went in to find out, you were going to share it with the board.
Please, I did not. Please do not bring that up, you're, you're treading-
Well, we, I remember at a previous-
It was the, it was for your chairperson to reach out and make a phone call.
Yes, the chairperson was supposed to reach out to try to find out what Pamela found, as far as-
Pamela didn't find it, it wasn't my responsibility to do so.
But you, you're really treading-
I'm treading that. No, it's an open meet, you don't want to, you don't want to disparage somebody's reputation in an, in an open meeting.
No one's saying what was founded. It was supposed to be shared with the board, though.
No, not by me. The chairperson was going to call our fee accountant if he, if you felt it necessary. But it was not for me to find out.
That's right.
I just remember you volunteering to find out.
No, she did not.
I'm going to have to look back on tapes, and then-
It's right here in the notes.
Text me, email me or something, okay?
And also, another thing I wanted to put on was to be able to view these policies that were worked on by the subcommittee. The ones that have been already looked at, so we can look at them. Each month, we request practically-
This is just a listing of agenda topics, we had a discussion.
It's the fourth or fifth time we've requested.
But, but you're treading on open meeting-
Reese, Reese, she's not talking, I'm sorry.
You're treading on open meeting law here.
Well, you asked me what I wanted to discuss at the next agenda.
No, it's just a bulleted item.
Reese, you don't have to-
May I make a suggestion? May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So for the special meeting that we're having on the 13th, if we can confine the topics to the ED search, and then the other topics that don't concern the ED search, we put on the later, the regular meeting. But why don't we just have a, with those topics that you're bringing up, about the ED search for the, the 13th?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else want to add anything to the?
No, and we should be looking at the policies you have. Absolutely. All right. Anything else, guys? If not, motion to a jury?
Make a motion.
My second.
Discussion, anything else? A jury?